Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and this is November 16th of 2023. Welcome everyone and let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
To the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we've got eight. We... So that would be Jim, you'd be the alternate? You're the second alternate, right?
I'm the first.
You're the first. Yeah, how could I forget? So yeah.
If we find you, then.
Everybody can vote except you, Jim.
What's that?
Uh, you, everybody can vote except you.
Okay.
Because of the number of people we have tonight. All right, that's okay. The approval of the agenda? Is?
We'll approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, um, I'd like to add something that I forgot and it's fairly, I don't think it's very detailed, but a discussion about the next year's budget. Like to put that under new business. If you're, you two are amenable to that.
Yep. Yes.
Anything else? Ready for the question? All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Think we can skip over public comment. I don't see anyone here or online than is the public. So, uh, new business, we did do a site visit earlier today off Route 7 at the, what is, what is called the Post Road Solar Project. So I just wanted to have just brief who didn't make it, what we saw, and then maybe take some notes down. If we want to share anything with a select board or anyone else about that visit. So, um, Norm, you want to start on what?
Um.
You saw, heard?
No.
The developer was there, of course.
The developer was there, is a very nice young man. Very open to questions. The, seems to be sensitive to the kinds of things that we look out for, have looked out for in the past. It seems to me the biggest question is the access for Route 7 and what, you know, what traffic problems that presents when they use it in the construction phase and possibly in repair phase.
But that wouldn't be something the town is concerned with. That would be a V-Trans thing. Because it's off Route 7.
It seems to be set back reasonably well and naturally screened pretty well and their plans for screening seem to be sensible. I don't know how far apart he's going to plant those trees. He didn't ask. We didn't ask or I didn't ask. So my sense is basically receptive.
Um, Mary Beth, do you feel like it being put on the spot?
Sure, yeah, I agree that sounds like the plan for screening is good and so he would share the site plan with us before they submitted and so we'll be able to see what particular trees. And, and then it was nice to see it from the center of the site. Not a residential area, it just looks like it seems like a suitable area.
Jim, any?
I don't have too much to add except I will state that I believe that even if the Thomases were actively farming and using that land themselves rather than renting it out with today's types of equipment and everything, they would find that that area in there very difficult to operate equipment on because of the terrain and the, the turns and the, there's nothing laid out there that's you could call square or triangle or, or whatever. It's, it's, it's just a, it looks like a hodgepodge of land that was left over from something else way, way back I'm talking.
Yeah, maybe left, period, in many cases.
So to use it for something like this, I think is, is probably a wise move. The next question will be how the state is going to, and we should get involved too if we get neighbors that are interested there about access to the place. It's really, really a tough one.
Right, right, right. For small cars, much less construction.
We don't need to create any more vehicle accidents and that kind of thing if we can avoid it.
Yeah, the probably, once the construction is done, there wouldn't be much traffic. There would be, you know, some maintenance done. I'm not sure how often.
But that, you can have all the construction you want, but the, the bottom line is that it comes out onto Route 7 as a terrible spot. And I will go with that statement right through the, the process because I think it's one that safety issues just cannot be violated.
Okay, Andy?
I pretty much agree with what all has been said so far. I think the, uh, the site, as Jim pointed out, is really, it's, it's a very good site. It's surrounded by a number of commercial and industrial operations, including that big switching yard, that GMP switching yard, Moore's Auto. And the terrain doesn't really lend itself to being in subdivision of housing or anything with the, with the steep grades and, and and the, the land to be used for housing would have to be substantially leveled. So I think it's a good spot. And I think there, the developer seems more than willing to address the, uh, the issues of, of both setback and and screening.
It was a lot, uh, it's a lot hillier than I ever imagined driving by there as many times I have. Yeah, very steep hills and a number of hills, a number of valleys. But somehow he can still, I'm not sure how many panels he's going to get, but it's going to be a big array.
He estimated 12 to 14 acres. The parcel is about 20, 20 acres and with the wetlands and the archaeological lands and various other limitations. I think he, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he estimated 12, only 12 to 14 acres would be taken up. And I think Andy addressed my major concern and always my major concern is the impact on surrounding areas and surrounding facilities, residential, et cetera. And this seems to be located in a spot that by its nature in a sense addresses that very well.
So they have done, they went back and looked at an archaeological study that was done. He wasn't sure how many years ago, but that's the southwestern part of the parcel. Real close, right off Route 7, is archaeologically sensitive. So he lost some space there. So there's probably not much chance that he's going to do the setback even more than the 100 feet that's required of a state highway. He did mark that off for us. 100 feet, it was closer than I thought it was, but it is, is going to be 100 feet. All of the panels, they're all going to be fixed, you know, not going to be rotating with the sun and they'll all be facing due south. But just with the terrain, I'm not sure those, the people driving by are going to see much. And I'm not sure any of the neighbors like Norm mentioned and we drove up, a couple of people drove up to the armory. And we can't see much from there either.
The question I had is there're going to be some panels close to the armory on the west side of the natural buffer, I suppose, the wetlands and then the trees. And they're going to take down some trees. He indicated they would be cutting down trees wherever they could. And that, that may be a concern if that exposes too much. We didn't ask him that.
But that wouldn't be the town. That'd be, that'd be the federal government that would.
I'm just thinking that even to the, you know, may, you know, if nothing was disturbed, the existing or bordering businesses might not have much of a concern. If more is disturbed and it's more open than it is now, you know, there may be some opposition.
So Mary Ashcroft came along at the site visit too from the select board. So that was good. And she, she told the developer when, when funny thing is like if they ask for a sidewalk, tell them there's a shared youth, a use path going in across the highway connecting with the city sidewalk and, and up to Post Road. But this isn't the same as, you know, some of the commercial entities that have thought about putting a business there and, and the state coming back and say, what about a sidewalk? This probably will never come up. And the developer is thinking of, of that. He's got another project that he's trying to finalize right now. He's hoping to, to get his full application into the state on this one by the end of the year. But no guarantees on that. But it does sound like, you know, it is moving again. Any questions? So I'm not sure there's much for us. Does anyone think we need to do anything other than wait for the site plan and at that point?
It was just information gathering and you've shared the information. Good.
Yeah, I think we just wait for this. Wait for the site plan to come in and review it against what we, what we've seen.
Interesting parcel. Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about the budget, it's budget time already. Even though we're only like four and a half months into the fiscal year. The select board starts putting together the budget, oh, in a few weeks probably. So I'm, on your desk, I asked Kerry for what our budget is this year. That's the first column of numbers. Oh, I'm sorry. The first column is what we spent last fiscal year. The, the middle column is what we have to spend this year and the third column to date is what the expenses that have come in this fiscal year. So, um, does anyone looking at those, does anyone think we need more money, less money? Our total budget's about 11,240. We've spent 4,109 in four and a half months.
4409, is that what you said?
Uh, 4109.
4109, okay.
And what's our budget?
11,240. Uh, legal, we've spent quite a bit with legal and we knew that. The regional commission is mostly dues to the regional commission. Salaries for the planning commission are that 035263 row. Those don't seem like they're going to go over or go anywhere close. Miscellaneous, I think probably we bought some things for the yep. For the townwide celebration and such.
So this is since July 1st, right?
Yeah.
Four months, yeah, it's a third of the year.
And then the advertising would be like the notices that Bill has to pay for. Put in the paper and such. And consulting fees with this, just, it's been in here a while. We, as you can see, we don't normally use it. It's when we have to go out of house and, and pay for consultant for one thing or another.
The one concern I have is that, if I understand this correctly, we're what? Try August. We're four months into the year and we spent 40, 75% of our legal salary. So I think next legal budget. And, um, I think maybe next year. Now, I don't know what we've done historically, maybe before we recommended a increase. We want to know over the years, have we, you know, broken the budget or not?
No, I mean, I think most years, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but we're more like the, the last year's actual, like we spent about $500.
These are the ordinance reviews and
Sorry.
The legal fees are related to ordinance topics and there was a lot of emails and communication to Kevin about subdivision, the short-term rentals all this year. So that's where that, that's where that came from.
Do you think there's many more bills coming in from him?
Uh, he still has subdivision ordinance. I, he, he told me three weeks ago he'd have to be next week and you know, he's aware of the Act 47 thing and that's probably was holding him up, but I haven't gotten an update from him. I've talked to him for a while, so.
Yeah, and the select board looks at this kind of differently. I mean, we don't have like a, a big budget. They, they look at each line item. And so if like we go over with legal, we've gone over our budget. Even if we still have like, you know, $8,000 left in the other lines.
So are you suggesting we raise it? On the legal side? And we've got $475 left for eight months.
Well, it is what it is for this fiscal year. We, we can't raise it for this fiscal year.
No, I'm, but I was thinking for next year. Based on this.
But then we wouldn't have anywhere near those things for the, right? I mean, traditionally, Norm, all the years I've been here, it's about 500, 600 bucks. So there doesn't seem to me, just because one year we hit that level because there were so many that we need to raise that. I, I think that's crazy.
I'm going to take an objecting opinion to what
At least quote the middle.
Yeah, well, no, I, I think you're right. I'm going to take an objective opinion to the way the, um, the select board, if it's in fact true that the select board says you're going over budget. That's malarkey. A budget is just a target that you set so that you can figure out how much you're going to expend. So i-if we go over in legal fees and we go under in, uh, pick something, uh, planning commission salaries or we go under in regional commission or whatever, then that is, we're still within our budget. We look at it as a whole. I mean, that's what, that's what budgeting is about. You don't do line item budgeting. I mean, except to say, what do you think you're going to expend? And for us to artificially inflate our legal fees when we don't know that we're going to have that, I don't think makes a whole lot of sense. So, I mean, I, I did a calculation. I mean, maybe you gave these to us, Barbara, I didn't hear it. But our total for last year was 4306. That was the entire year for 12 months for the 2022, 2023 actuals. And right now we're at 4109. So we've practically spent in a third of the year what we spent all of last year. If we were to stay on track, we would end up this year at 12,000, which would, which would be, to Barbara's point, over budget. Because we have 11,400, 11,200, whatever it is, 11,240. So the, the question in my mind is, uh, do we think that spending 4109 each of our quarter or each third of the year is, is going to result in an overage on the budget and that that would be something we'd be carrying forward? If we do, then we add more to legal, we add $1,000, we call it done. If we don't think that we're actually going to go over budget because other things are going to adjust themselves, then I say we live it alone.
We can't add it anyway.
No, for next year. So I'm, I'm saying if we think that we're going to maintain that level of spending, then the judicious thing to do would be to add $1,000 to the budget.
And Howard and Mary Beth, I'm sorry, didn't get these figures to you. What we're primarily talking about is the legal fees, as you've heard. Last year we spent $518. The, the budget this year is 2,000 and to date in this, this fiscal year, we spent
No, that's funny.
I do have a question for next year. So for the legal fees, I mean, the select board asked us to look at all the ordinances and that's what the bill is from, but I don't think we're going to be done with that this year, right? The subdivision ordinance is going to go into 2024, right? And then the other ordinances that they asked us to look at. So I think, shouldn't we raise it for, at least for next year? Um, just knowing that we're going to be doing that work or?
Yeah, maybe. I'm not sure we'll have much more for Kevin this fiscal year because once he's done with the subdivision ordinance, we'll just give that to the select board and then they will be paying for any legal advice at that point.
So the way the expenses kind of got divided up was if there wasn't ordinance, like we had the, we had some that if the board themselves did and didn't send to you and they sent to Kevin, kept, those came out of our general legal ones.
Right.
If the, so if the select board sent it to you guys and you guys said, okay, we're sending it to Kevin, then it came out of this one. Ultimately, it's all out of the general budget. Nobody's going over. It's just, it's just a guide to keep us, you know, to, to have some type of depth for that specific purpose, but nobody's going over.
Okay.
We had this conversation last year, actually, as well.
Yeah, and you know, when, when I can go to the select board and say, we're, you know, we're a little bit concerned about the legal fees. But we think, you know, we think if we level budget, we'll be okay for the next fiscal year. But if you want, want us to go up, we'll go up.
Sounds reasonable to me.
And I think we could, if, if we do have much more with Kevin, we probably could use that, that 267 line, the consulting fees.
Ultimately, we, we don't, we don't move them around to, to balance it. It just is what it is.
It is what it is.
Your advertising covers things like legal notices too.
Yep.
Yeah.
Mostly.
Subdivision warnings.
I don't think this is an unreasonable request for $2,000. When you don't, you never know from one week to the next what is going to transpire legally and you have to go to the paper with a bunch of stuff and that's expensive.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and Mary Beth, to your point, for the rest of this fiscal year, I don't think we'll need Kevin too much. It, you know, what we do with the river corridors, I'm not sure he can help us anyway. I mean, that's, that's something we can work with, with the state and get the language right with them. So I think we're pretty much done with Kevin, you feel, whenever he finishes the subdivision. And, you know, we're done, you know, we've given the short-term rentals to the select board, so we're done with that.
Well, I, I wouldn't be surprised if they sent that back to us.
And it's true.
But remember, we're talking about the developing the budget for next year, not what our costs are going to be this year. Except to inform ourselves about what we're likely to be doing next year. And if we're likely to be working on things that are policy, procedure, ordinance related, and we think we're going to need Kevin for that, then we base our recommendation on what we see on the horizon. If we don't see anything on the horizon and we expect to return to the, you know, the, the previous year's legal expenses at $518 and we don't have to do anything. Call it good. If we do, as Jim was saying, you know, it might be might be appropriate to add a little bit. You know, but it's really what we think is on the horizon, not what's happening this year.
So true. And with the river corridors, we should be looking at our, our floodplain ordinance as well so that there might be some legal.
Work needed or advice.
But I'm not sure what else we want to get into.
The question is, is there anything on the horizon currently on our docket that is going to go into next year? And our, originally, we didn't think that our subdivision ordinance was going to go that far, but it took us a lot longer
Yeah.
to develop than we had anticipated. And that's okay.
It was really dated and we needed
Right. It needed a lot of work.
Yeah, a lot of work and Kevin's time.
Right.
Just level fund it then.
Okay.
I think that's where we're all headed, right?
Any objections to that?
Any objections to me mentioning that we've, we've spent a lot with legal, uh, but we think level funding?
And, and that was really driven by the select board.
Oh, it really was.
So how's it, if there's anything that we should be expecting?
Something they want us to do. It's going to bring, and how are we going to plan for that? We don't, we don't know what's really on the horizon.
I, I don't know what Kevin charges us per hour. But I know what my attorney charges me.
He's not, he, he said he didn't know what Kevin charges us for 180.
I'm sorry?
I think it's like 180.
That's very reasonable.
That's
But it's only, it's 10 hours of his time for a year that 12 hours.
I don't see why we don't just leave it alone. Historically, we don't even come close. Because one year we had a little bit of extra expense. I don't think it's a big deal. I think we, I think we leave it alone and, and I just think we're, we're splitting hairs.
And if we come under budget on other areas, we can live with that, right?
We, we will, we will see that. Historically, we've done, every year we, I, I don't think we, I've ever, the years I've been here, we've ever had this much discussion about the budget because it moves forward because it stays very similar. This year we happened to hit a bump in the road, but the, if you mention to them and they see something on the horizon, maybe we talk about a little bit more.
And they can make a decision for us. Yeah, let them.
You know, Bill sees what's happening. It's, it's, you know.
So I'm going to move that
Thank you.
We submit the budget for 24, 425, uh, the same amounts that we have on the current budget.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And passes. Okay, great. Okay, great. Thanks for your input on that. Uh, did everyone, um, look at and or print, um, the spreadsheet that Bill put together for the,
Yep.
We're now down to old business in the, in the river corridor.
Yep.
I do not have. Somehow I missed it.
I don't think we'll get into a lot of detail on what's on here, but it's, it's much cleaner now.
We removed all of the ones that we didn't think were legitimate. So now we have, I didn't count them, but uh, we have, uh, I think about sixty residents. Well, actually, I don't know how, what we do on the second page.
The second page is just a continuation of like.
Right, I, I know, but I was, I had a, just a question about all the blank spaces on the top two-thirds of the page. Or maybe this is the way it printed. Maybe that's the continuation.
Those, those are notes. So sometimes there's notes.
Oh, that's, that's actually, so page one is the, I mean, I printed it. It looks like this. This is a continuation of page one on the sheet. Okay, I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
So forty-four. Yeah, so it's actually all that's on page one. Yours printed in two pages, my printed front, front of the back. Yep.
Forty-four, yes. Um, and then the small streams.
That included those, sorry.
It did, okay.
It gets thirty-seven and seven?
There's seven in the small screen.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that's seven.
Um.
Small stream, so that's seven, and then this was thirty-seven.
Should we take the pump station? Sixteen thirty-six. Vermont Route three. What did we decide on that last time?
I've had it at home. I can't read her.
But where are you, Barbara?
Um, it's, it's in the first grouping, so it's sixteen thirty-six Vermont Route three.
Oh, yeah, I see it, sixteen, yeah.
What did we decide on that, Howard? Do you remember?
It's a fire district pump station and actually, you know, West Rollins is going to end up with it, uh, sometime soon. But anyways, yeah, it's, that's what it is and it, it is in the floodplain, but I don't, I don't know if we decided anything to do with it.
Okay. So I guess leave it in for now.
I would think so.
We still have zero Amanda Drive in.
It's a garage. It looks, it looks like to me it's a garage, which.
That, that, that needs, that, that needs to have a, a number assigned to it. That's a, basically that's like a tool shed that, uh, Russ has up there that, that he's using. I understand he, he's using that as a workshop type of a thing. And really, the very simple thing, Bill, just decided a number and then that'll cover it.
I tried a simple approach for another one and was met with substantial resistance. So I will, I will handle that one.
Okay, I'm surprised because I know time and time again, they, when they saw a building of some size setting by itself, they just wanted to have a number on it. And this, uh, certainly, it's not zero, so it shouldn't be called zero because it's, there's no zero Amanda Drive.
It's listed as a garage, so it doesn't have a number right now because it's not an occupied dwelling.
Right.
I'll, I'll, I'll get into that one and it may, it may either come off the list or get a number if I wanted to.
So from my count, um, if we want to divide these into industrial, commercial versus dwellings, looks like there's twelve industrial, commercial. I'm just thinking what, you know, just thinking ahead of what our approach will be to these different landowners. These will probably be, will be different messages to different types. So I think we've, we're left with twelve of those, twenty-one dwellings. And then we get the one museum that I'm not quite sure what to do with yet.
Yeah, so that's thirty-three and you, that means you have four lots of one museum. And what's the next three?
I probably took out the pump station and the, the zero Amanda Drive when I was doing the count.
That leaves us with one.
Yeah. Would leave us with one.
That's seven small stream.
So I have twelve, twenty-one is thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six. We got one more. No, we've got, uh, that, that's thirty, what, are we just talking about the, um, primary addresses? We're missing one in the primary addresses. So twelve and twenty-one is, uh, thirty-three and one for the museum is thirty-four. Pump station thirty-five, zero man drive thirty-six, and we have thirty-seven here.
And it's probably.
Single family, single family, single family, single family.
Only a dwelling.
There's an office building. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
So I now come up with thirteen industrial, commercial.
Thirteen, okay, that's probably right. That brings us to thirty-seven. And then what are we doing with the additional small streams? How are we handling those? Single family, one, two, three.
They're all single, they're all.
Except for the GMP surge tank.
Surge tank, yeah.
So there are small streams, six, six individual dwellings. And one surge tank. So if we're talking about total dwellings, we've got twenty-seven.
So thirteen industrial, commercial, one museum, twenty-seven dwellings.
Yep.
And is that everything?
Ten multi, right? Ten multifamily dwellings.
I think she's lumped those into the, uh, the dwellings.
But then isn't that thirty-seven or did you say thirty-seven?
No, there, it's total of thirty-seven. I think that in the twenty-one, she's got those ten multifamily dwellings. I think she counted single and multifamily to get twenty-one, but I don't know that for sure. So that's forty, the museum is forty-one, the pump station is forty-two and the, and Amanda Drive is forty-three, so, and then the surge tank is forty-four.
I think that's, I think that's correct. We had the, anyone have the actual spreadsheet, Bill, do you have it? Yeah, but with, where we can tell the line, count up the lines.
I can add like the first two, but that's no problem.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're thinking it should be forty-four. Bill, thank you so much for doing this. We had some, some weird stuff in there, like some of those condo units had a separate address and then each unit was included.
So, um, the, are you, are you looking for a recommendation about how to handle this? Are you looking at having two, uh, separate meetings, one for the dwellings and one for the commercial industrial? Or are you just?
Thinking that, yeah, because there's so many.
Yeah.
Um.
And then, uh, I mean, the pump station, Amanda Drive and the museum could all jo- join the industrial commercial if you wanted, or the surge tank.
Mm-hmm.
Now that still only brings that up to twenty, uh, excuse me, that only brings that up to seventeen. Is that right? Yeah, that still only brings that up to seventeen. Uh, thirteen and seventeen and then forty-four. So, yeah, you could get it all done in two meetings and it could focus on the individuals or multifamily and then you can focus on the, uh, industrial commercial needs and you can gather information from each constituent group.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, still not in any hurry to do this.
Okay.
Especially given the time of year and and the fact of giving the select board something else that we've done, that we're not ready for. They know we're doing this, but things seem to get put, get tabled a lot.
Well, anyway, it would take us a little time to get the information out and to, you know, plan that informational session.
Right.
So if you're looking for the spring?
Yeah.
Okay, March or April or something like that?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, well, we just put it on a future agenda and look at it then and then we can do some planning ahead of that.
So maybe the next meeting, um, let's concentrate on businesses and the commercial entities.
Yep.
And maybe messages for them. What we want to say to them.
Yep.
And, and what I really mean is like what we want to put in the letter to invite them to a meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good. Everybody good with that one?
Okay.
Okay. Um, we're down to announcements. Bill put in a notice, um, from the select board for another site visit. Uh, this is for Dire Road and, um, what's the term, throwing it up? The town is throwing it up. It's discontinuing it.
There's a town road.
Yeah.
It is called throwing it up.
This is for what?
This is for Mon- Dire Road. And the site visit, uh, that the select board is doing is Monday, November twenty-seventh, Monday after Thanksgiving at nine AM.
Is that going to involve us at all?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Um.
I can't make that, but.
I think they, they just want to visualize what the road is and then, uh, this will. Okay.
So the town is giving up maintenance of that road, is that correct?
Up the road as a whole. It's, we're getting up the road.
Does that mean? Okay.
Where is that, where's Dire Road?
It's, it's, um, to the west, it's kind of like behind the, the John Deere, whatever the name, mountain.
Oh, okay. I know, yeah, no, I know what you mean. Yep, got it.
The road, it goes nowhere.
Yep, I know the one.
It would have gone to all those apartments.
Yep.
New apartments, yeah.
So it's just a dirt trail, basically. Okay. And if nothing's going in there, there's no obligation to.
There's a, I believe there's another, um, piece of land between the fast road and the dire property that is being farmed. And there's, um, it used to be anyway, when I was on the select board, quite a lot of farm traffic through there. I would, I would much rather see the select board consider um, changing the classification from class, probably class three to class four. And that way they wouldn't have to maintain it during the winter.
There was some discussion about that, wasn't there?
It, it's actually a road to nowhere. I, I'm surprised. No, I'm surprised that the town is maintaining any of it. Because once you turn off from Middle Road to get on to Dire Drive, there's nothing there. Just like, you know, Jesse Billings used to, uh, farm those fields out there, Jim, and, and he was the one that used it for farming, but that was, I think that was pretty much it. So it's kind of a road to nowhere. It, it used to be, it was part of Middle Road until the bypass came, so when the bypass, uh, changed all that.
Hmm.
So the site visits twenty-seventh is going to be probably pretty short. And then they're hearing testimony for or against on December fifth at the board meeting.
Hmm. And there are some property owners there. Other than buildings, right?
Well, it's one two property owners, United Ag and Turf and the Dire Road, the, the Dire, something, it's called LLC, I think.
Hmm.
It's been notified.
So, yeah, I mean, we can ask about the class, we can re-ask about the class four, I guess. Um, but who is it for?
Well, um, of course, there'll have to be hearings, um, public hearings. So that'll give, uh, those folks that use that road an opportunity to speak up.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, they'll be getting, they'll be getting letters about the November fifth hearing.
That, the, the people that are involved have been properly noticed.
So there's a hearing on the fifth?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. I don't think it really affects us.
Oh, and then the hearing's at seven. Where?
Oh, at seven?
At seven.
Right.
Okay.
During, during regular board meeting.
After it starts, yeah.
Okay. The board meeting will start at six and the hearing will begin at seven.
Pause the meeting at?
Yep.
Seven, yeah.
The hearing's at the site.
Okay.
Okay, any other announcements? Yeah.
So the next meeting is December seventh. And I don't know if you want to decide on anything. I didn't put anything on the calendar beyond that, but I don't want to decide anything beyond that.
So the one after.
Twenty-eighth.
We, yeah, we'll be the twenty-eighth.
No, we won't only, you don't want to do the last meeting in December, so.
We usually bump it one week.
Right.
To start in the first week of January and then we set our calendar from there.
That'd be January fourth.
January fourth, next meeting, okay, after.
Next meeting is twelve seven?
What's that?
Twelve seven, our next meeting.
Uh, twelve seven, yes, and then January fourth.
Which is actually four weeks as opposed to three.
Yep.
And then we start our cycle every three weeks after that. So it was me, that's what we do every year.
Works good.
That's how we roll.
Yep. So set the, uh, twenty twenty-four calendar based on January fourth.
So except for the town report.
Better, something better.
But you didn't get Mary Beth and Howard?
No, no, I didn't. They escaped, but I'll get them going.
Okay, so don't show up on the twenty-eighth. Yeah, you can show up. Okay, I guess we can go to the minutes.
We'll have to approve the minutes from October twenty-sixth.
Is there a second?
Second. I found them succinct and clear and flawless.
Flawless.
That is my recollection.
Uh, good.
I don't have them here, but.
You weren't even here. Even there.
At the meeting.
But yeah, okay, good, good. So we got Norm's stamp of approval as well.
My, my grandfather's.
Thanks, Norm.
Okay, anyone else want to chime in? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes as so skillfully prepared by Bill? Sweet. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay.
So Bill, Kevin has not sit, given us any kind of timetable, getting back any of this. Oh, okay. He hasn't forgotten. Okay, well, sorry to make this such a short meeting.
We'll adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.